Non-tune calls in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the breakdown is as follows. We had eighteen alarm calls, uh, fourteen motor vehicle incidents, uh, fifteen, uh, thirteen neutralized, which they break down to one car fire, one electrical fire, six grass fires, one structure fire, one rubbish, and three stand downs, which I'm not sure what what they were originally called. Uh, we had, back because of brief, they had eleven rubbish fires, uh, six hot bull slash hot, uh, power lines, uh, four vehicle fires, four lift assists, uh, with, uh, ambulance in the, uh, three structure fires, uh, three iPhone crash detections, uh, which were non, uh, even both, uh, three, uh, medical calls, uh, with a cardiac assistance, uh, three chimney, or sorry, two chimney fires, one electrical fire, one off-road rescue, one aircraft emergency, uh, one grass fire, and one, uh, gas slash fifteen. Now, I didn't, uh, put my my hours down here, but there was, I didn't include it there, but there was, uh, sixty-nine hours of total duration at at the scenes, uh, with, I think, four hundred and seventy, over four hundred and seventy of of manpower hours accumulated with with these calls. And that's, uh, that's my call report for any comments?
Okay.
Any questions?
Do we have questions on Chief Anderson's report? Oh, good. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to do?
Yes, I I took mine right off of first, which is, uh, is a reporting system that we submit to the province, it's a fire incident reporting system. So our our breakdowns are a little bit different, but, uh, so they 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 class them under fire explosion, so that's typically how it could even be, uh, sometimes it can even be a car. So we had eight calls, uh, for service, uh, for that, uh, ninety-six hours, uh, rubbish, grass fires, nuisance fires, basically, we called, we had forty-two hours for that, uh, only one chimney, uh, call, but sometimes they come in as, uh, a actual structure fire. So anyway, just shows one, I I'm pretty sure we had more than that, but, uh, uh, rescue, uh, miscellaneous, one call for service for fifteen hours, uh, vehicle accidents, uh, we had twenty for two hundred and thirty hours. Uh, not sure where the break, uh, for the industrial accident, uh, if that was something at the school or there might have been at the arena, where, uh, we had a, uh, a medical call at the arena, but and one call for six hours. Uh, this is where it gets a little weird when it gets into the resuscitation. Keswick Valley last year had, uh, the most fatalities I think we've ever had in in my eighteen years on the fire department, I think we were around seven. So, uh, when we put them into the report, obviously, when we get there, we're hoping they're gonna be alive, so we don't document them that they're DOA or they're, uh, dead on arrival when we get there. So it breaks down like this, uh, resuscitation heart attack, two calls for fifteen hours, uh, resuscitation DOA, that might have been, uh, we did have a a known hanging, so, uh, that might have been that call, I would have to pull each one out of first, but, uh, public hazard, uh, uh, one call for six hours, uh, public service, a lot of, a lot of them are kind of mixed up with the, uh, lift assists like Dean made reference to, so we had, uh, we had one of them, uh, public service mutual aid, uh, we had twenty, that would be with our, uh, brothers and sisters at Keswick Bridge or, uh, or Millville. Public service to assist the police, uh, we had twelve, uh, for seventy-three hours. Uh, we had a hundred and seventy-three, uh, training events, this is, uh, this is our kind of pride of Keswick Valley, we had over, uh, three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine hours of training, uh, and then we have a a lot of meetings, uh, you know, three hundred and fifty-three hours of meetings, uh, maintenance at the hall, that could be anything from a a truck check, wash the truck, uh, whatever it could be, it could be anything, uh, four hundred and ninety-four hours for administration, and the, uh, the fundraising miscellaneous, that's a, that's a weird one, sometimes a a member will use the hall for something like that, uh, fire prevention, all that kind of stuff kind of goes into that one. On-call hours, we we really only have one guy that kind of documents that, whereas the rest of us don't even document it. So I, uh, I wanted to let yous all know that we have somebody that can answer the radio basically twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so, uh, Lieutenant Galloway typically, does that every day, every night, uh, he's, he's a, he's a good man. Uh, when he, uh, said he wanted a couple of weeks off, uh, to take a break, we all, about five of us all said absolutely, let let him have the break, because when he comes back, we don't have to do it, so it's nice to have him. So we have somebody on the radio for, uh, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six hours, that's easy math, that's three hundred and sixty-five and a quarter times twenty-four, right? So, uh, so our total hours, uh, are five thousand six hundred and eighty-three. We were actually down a little bit, now, when I did this report after I'd submitted this, we were pretty close, uh, last year, this was up by, I think it was sixty, uh, sixty-three thirteen is what the number I remember. Uh, I think our last year's calls for twenty twenty-three were a hundred and nineteen calls, so, which was the the busiest year ever for Keswick Valley. We typically run sixty, seventy, seventy-five, eighty calls, uh, so, uh, I'd I'd say we were in a more normal range where we we normally be for for twenty twenty-four, hoping we'd be lower for twenty twenty-four.
Let's hope.
We can hope.
Any questions for Chief Hodgson, yes, councilor Edwards?
Do you have, yeah, I'd imagine you have it listed that on each of these calls, how many members were actually at that call?
Yeah, the the, each call in this, uh, fire incident, uh, reporting system has what apparatus went, uh, what we did, so if we went to a car accident, all we did was disconnect the battery, assist the tow truck, that's all it says is.
How do you separate that bit with when you were connected to Millville?
Well, it's it's separate now, it's completely, it's completely separate now, but before, uh, that was really, uh, kind of very unusual, because I had, I didn't have access to to Noble's, uh, fire incident reporting system, but they had access to mine.
How do you know how many people to send out for each one of these calls?
We send everybody. The the simple math for that is, uh, if if we we send everybody, especially for a structure fire.
And how many would that be?
Well, who's ever available to come, so it's it's basically based on your availability, so right now, if we got a call, I'd look at this and if I could go, I would, I would go, but.
Just one last one.
Yeah.
Um, what what did you say that Lieutenant Galloway did?
He's a duty officer, he's our duty officer, not do-dee, do-dee.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me congratulate Keswick Valley on the new fire truck.
Yeah.
A sharp looking unit.
Yeah, we like it, we like it, uh, the boys are working hard to outfit it, it's, uh,
Service unit.
They need to come with water on it, yeah, put our own water on it, you manage to send that truck all the way from that to that, put the water on it. So if you guys are around on, uh, February sixteen, uh, we're having a little service to push that truck into the the bay, we're gonna recognize a couple guys, we've got two gentlemen with twenty-five years of service, so we're pretty excited about that. On that note, uh, last night, uh, actually on there, it says forty-one members, uh, we lost a member, uh, Gordy Gox had been with us for, uh, ten, ten years, he entered the the service same year as I did, and, uh, the last couple of years, he's been kind of absent, and, uh, I, uh, he asked if he could speak to the group before we started training last night, and we were, uh, a little nervous, I said, oh, this could be, you might let us have it, but he, uh, he was really gracious and he, uh, he thanked us all, and, uh, he, uh, he told a couple little stories and, uh, gave me a little dinky card for, uh, Fire Chief Carter, his knife. Anyway, uh, we're we're gonna miss him, he was our, uh, our fire investigator for many years, but, uh, he just, life got in the way and he just hasn't been, uh, he hasn't been participating in training and attending calls, and, uh, so anyway, he did, he kind of retired, he hung up his hat, so he, he's ten-seven, he makes reference to it in the fire service, he's gone.
Yeah. Just one slight technicality, uh, it's now Deputy Mayor Brownlow, as of two weeks ago.
Okay, yeah.
Nothing serious, I'm just, just noting that, so, yes.
It's not directly related to the reports, but the way it is, when, uh, part of any organization is is being strategic about where you're going, and I'm just curious as to what each of you would see as the greatest strengths on your department right now, and what will your greatest challenges be? It it could be training, it could be response, I I'm curious too on on how the mutual aid is working between the two departments, so, any comments on that?
I I think it's working all right, uh, I mean, if we are able to call each other off quickly, we do, before, you know, you roll post communities and get everybody out of it and stuff, but, uh, you know, as far as, uh, strength, I I'd say our strength is in our officer group, uh, we've got, uh, six or eight guys that, we make a joke in the fire service, uh, SDP for the same ten people, uh, and that's probably the same in a lot of volunteer organizations, I'm sure the Lions Club and church groups have the same, same problem, uh, and I would say my challenge with that is I I don't wanna burn them, I was like, uh, they they were at the hall on the weekend, and they moved all the trucks around and organized stuff, uh, I think they were there from like nine till three o'clock on the weekend, so, you know, it's it's a balance, and that you don't wanna burn your really good people out, but at the same time, we we ask a lot of them, they've been organizing that truck now since we got it on the twenty-eighth of December, and we're all very excited to, uh, Wayne and I are really excited, I'd like to put it into service, but, uh, uh, they committed to us to make that truck, uh, you know, our our lead truck, they're gonna have it set up, uh, so that everything is secure in all the compartments, there's a lot of stuff on that truck, like, it's it's crazy how much stuff, so, when you start taking it off one truck to put on the new truck, you you realize how much stuff you're lugging around on the on the fire truck.
I would suggest all councilors, if they can go that day, uh, February sixteenth, wasn't it?
Yep.
And see the new fire truck.
We're gonna have cake, that's all you need, all you need, guys, always cake.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't think there's any more questions, but I'm.
You having any challenges with mutual aid or strengths? I pulled this under there.
So I think as far as, uh, our strengths at the the bridge, uh, we had a quite a new flux of of younger people, um, probably half a dozen to to eight in the last three or four months, uh, some of them are very close to level one status, so that's, uh, that's our weakness, that's our 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 strength right now, but plus also our weakness, uh, because they are so fresh, um, which you've just got level one, uh, but they get no experience, um, some are very close to level one, but there again, they get no experience. So the the challenge is is gonna be this year to to turn those those folks, complete their level one, and bring them up to a, uh, a qualified firefighter, not they're not, not that they're they're not ready for that challenge, but, you know, to to get them to the the point where they need to to fulfill that role. And as far as, uh, working with the valley, there's, I haven't run into any issues there, um, we we recently had a structure fire here last weekend, which which I felt, you know, between, uh, officers, we had, uh, you know, one line officers and and one bureau officers, I I think they work very well together, um, they're they're same, you know, the same age and.
Good, glad to hear that.
Yeah, so, uh, I I don't anticipate any trouble, there's gotten a few bumps in the road chain, and as as any two organizations come together, but I don't see any trouble with what we're gonna be doing in the future.
On behalf of council, I'd certainly like to thank both chiefs and organizations for the valuable service that's provided in Central York, like, it's it's volunteer and it's, they're they're very selfless, these you guys and your your firemen, and it's, I I know the community takes it for granted a lot of the time, but, uh, what you people put into that, this council really appreciates what you people do with those two departments. And I think I said before, if they weren't the great departments they are, Central York probably wouldn't want to have taken them over a little over a year ago, but they were two great departments, and we wanted to have them under the umbrella of the municipality of Central York, so once again, thank you so much for all you do, goodbye.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
No other questions, I guess you're free.
Keep keep warm, all right?
I say that carefully, don't be too close to the fire. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to approval of the previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from January fourteenth? So moved by Councilor Anis, uh, seconded by, I don't know, seconded by Councilor Drake? Are there any errors?
Oh, one.
Omissions or discussion? Yes?
Uh, well, I straightened up with you and Wendy, the fact that I was left off.
Yeah, those were the the committee.
That you weren't left off of these?
I'm right at the corner of the hall.
You're not left off.
Oh, you're doing, yes. I I found the wrong one. I bring that one.
Okay. Any any further omissions, errors, questions? None, all those in favor? I'm reminded of any motion carried. So we'll move on to the business arising from the previous meeting minutes, do we have any business that come out of what we just approved? Okay. Yes?
I'm wondering, and and this is something I've thought about for a little while, our our previous meeting minutes only ever go one meeting back, but often, uh, projects take much longer than that, we know, because many different things, the region, the the region's been off and on it for the last year and a half, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to, and maybe not, maybe it's not in the previous minutes, but a a tracker that can go through some of these items that we can keep track of, that are not closed or that need to be taken off of this, because we need to change direction or something's happened, because if there was something on here that, say, was back in July, that we, you know, said, well, we'll bring this up in a couple of weeks, we may not, it may not be, and there may not be no reason to either, I'm just.
Are you thinking more of motions?
No, not necessarily just motions, but but anything that would be under this business arising or anything like that, that would be something we say we should keep track of this, I know my memory's too short to say.
Action items?
Kind of an action item, so that's, yeah, that would be a, a way to put it, is there something that, will council breeze, bring their thoughts back to this in a few weeks? Sometimes we drop those items and and, you know, revisit them, because other things come up.
Okay, I would suggest we track that.
I have no idea, I just wanted to bring it up as a discussion point.
Okay, it's a good point, very good point, because things can be, you know, at time, you move on, forget about it, and whatnot.
And a lot of the times, we know that they are in flight, there's stuff happening in behind the scenes, the doctor's working on stuff, but it would allow us to be able to see these things, and I maybe ask a question on it, because my memory's parable with that stuff, I don't, and maybe that's just on me, but.
I don't think so. Do you have, do you know how we might track action items?
You're not gonna like my answer.
Yeah, which may be things we don't.
If there's nothing to report, I'm saying, so, I apologize, I, uh, yeah, like, if it's on my C A O report, that's where we're at, we're in three fluid around here, there is lots of stuff going on, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if you want me to come in and have a list of things, specific area, obviously, you know, I'll have a list of the stuff, you actually don't say nothing to report, nothing to report.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking that formal or, I don't even, uh, like I say, I'm not sure the format that I was thinking, and it may be just something that if we don't tick a box on something, it's on a back page somewhere, is that if we have a question on that, the answer might be no movement as of yet, or no, nothing to report, I wouldn't expect it line by line, but I would, for my own purposes, I guess, for my own selfish purposes.
I might suggest too, maybe you don't like my answer, that we as councilors, each time we go through the minutes, if there's an action item, maybe we should jot it down and put the date on it when that was going through the minutes, and in a month or two months or three months, maybe if we haven't heard anything or whatever, bring that up again and ask.
Because we we put action items on ourselves to say, well, we'll look into that and get back to it, and then I know I I I know for a fact I dropped stuff or I've never revisited it again when I should have.
So maybe, maybe it's kind of on all of us to. To do that, I I don't, just my thought on it, so. Any other thought? Yes, councilor Anis?
Uh, item eight, seeing the other street light, was yourselves, corner of six one and seven and one oh four, and it really benefits that intersection, and then notice that the people are depending on going there after there.
Yes, I think all the street lights have done a good job on the dark intersection, I'm, I'm quite impressed with them, I hope the residents are as impressed.
Well, I'm, I was surprised, uh, that I got requests for a couple more, so.
Anyway, um, that's, that's it for business arising from the minutes, do we have anything else, other than my counselor, Forbes, or that? No, okay. Uh, correspondence, we have none, uh, committee reports, uh, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from January fourth through twenty twenty-four, I have a motion that we approve the committee meeting, committee, meeting minutes of the whole. Moved by Camp Deputy Mayor Brownlow, seconded by Deputy Mayor Forbes. Do we have questions, errors, or omissions on the minutes, meeting minutes of the whole? And yes, councilor Edwards, your name was left off, but I think that has been corrected.
Thank you.
So is is there anything else on the minutes, meeting minutes? If nothing, hearing nothing, do we, all those in favor?
All right.
Contrary minded of any motion carried. Uh, we'll call on our our treasurer, Karina Lending, if she'll come forward and present our audit financial statements for November and December. Thank you, Karina, for coming to make.
So on this statement, we have November, December, as well as April on the rates, which is the total for the year twenty twenty-four. The first page is all of the revenue. If you look at number four and five, that's our monthly unprofessional grants and awards. If you go down to number nine, other government revenue, you'll see in December, um, that amount is in relation to money that we receive back for the purchase of the central office building. If you go down to number fourteen, um, other miscellaneous income, that is a monthly rents for, uh, unit two and unit three of the central office building. Number fifteen, interest income, that is the interest that we earn every month on the money that is sitting in the capital reserve and operating reserve accounts. And totals are on the rates, and on the very bottom for November, December, means for the year. Uh, the second section, uh, the expenses, shows the amount of expenses for November, December, and for the full of the year. Under the first section, general government services, number four to eleven, also as well as number fifteen, are all the payrolls, um, other payroll expenses, so this E I, C P P, health benefits, are lumped into eighteen, which is other administrative services. I will add that number eighteen, you can see in December, that there is an increase, and that is due to part of the cost of the signage for Central York, uh, being put in that account because of the room that was left in the budget for that account. Number sixteen, office building, includes, um, cost of its power, internet phone, maintenance costs, you'll see in. So number. So, number fifteen, sorry, um, human resources personnel, you'll see in November, that amounts as well being higher, that is the other portion of the signage for Central York again, because that's, that account's had more room left over in the budgets. And if you slip to the next page. To effective services, um, so number nine, so fourteen, are all the expense accounts for Kesswick Bridge and Kesswick Valley Fire Department, and if you look up at line three and four, you'll see the percentages for November, December, and for the total for the year. And then I'll add also for December, you will see under line number ten, our production personnel, so that's where the the camp of the stipends were in, so that's why that big increase in December.
Thank you. Good, Karina? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the audit of the financial statements for November and December? Moved by Councilor Edwards, do we have a second? Seconded by Mayor Brownlow, now, do we have any questions for our treasurer, while she's still here with her report?
So it's, uh, line item sixteen, yeah, the total, is that just, if I have to. Yes, also for, front of which is the building, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? No? Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
Contrary minded, panel, motion carried. Thank you, Karina, very much. So we'll move on to our previous week's office report.
Excuse me. As we discussed during the January fourteen committee of the whole meeting, what would be the best way to properly plan recreational uses for Kia D seven five one two seven nine seven seven? I suggested approaching the city of Fredericton to acquire, if we might be able to utilize the planning services, instead of trying to find someone on our own, a reply from their C A O is as follows. Duncan, I had a quick chat with some folks, and we are on board to help, our new landscape architect will go live what she can, not layer any rep for recreation parks to help, we would not want any financial. We would not want any financial contribution from our staff's efforts, but if we need third party support, example, surveying, we'd get your approval and your funds to cover that. Essentially, this is a great use of our capacity to help our neighbors, do something ours isn't commended from, we don't need to collect a fee for that service. The only restraint I would have is that the scope be clearly and elaborately, elaborately established so that my leads can ensure our work plans can handle it. Could you set up a meeting with my team to discuss scope, timelines, desired objectives, et cetera? You can set the tempo. When you step back and look at what we're trying to accomplish and involve Central York's operational services, it would be a mistake not accepting an order like this one, or maybe it would be very generous.
Very generous. Do we have a motion to accept our C A O's report?
So.
Moved by Counselor Anis, seconded by Counselor Drake. Questions on the C A O report? I think that was a shock.
So did I.
Pleasantly shocking. It's not what I would expect. I I commend the city and.
I think there's certain C.
Mr. Hurd. Any questions, concerns?
Not a question or comment. I hope this will be the future collaborative efforts and for the benefit of both of citizens and both residents of both communities. It's a lot we do to help each other, even though we're the smaller president.
Yes. All those in favor of the report?
Aye.
Contrary minded, if any, motion carried. I have a bit of a report. It's not written. My report is the Deputy Mayor and myself attended the winter form of the Capitol District District of the Delta Friday morning. To to unpack the info, it was mainly what can the governments governance of the commission do better? The Minister of Local Government spoke, Aaron Kennedy, he is also Minister of Service in Brunswick. He stated that the tax assessments were unquestioned, directed by many different mayors and deputy mayors that attended there. They was directed, directed him and the staff, and they're supposed to have an overhaul of the assessments, hopefully by summer. In saying that, I I think that we we just noted the note from the city, which is very favorable for us. And I think I think some of the things in the past, I'm hoping that through the Service Commission, that some of these things can be through the governance. There's a re, they made a report, and it should be sent out. I only have a hard copy, but it's the M S report, if I had their stamp, and it probably should go to all. I think the Deputy Mayor has a copy too, right? I think it should go to all councilmen, that's what it's what the Service Commission wants to try to do better, to have more cohesion on the board. Because as you know, there was a fair bit of friction over the regionality assessment of the aquatic center and whatnot, and that kind of incide we's a bit, so. That's what most of Friday morning was about, was how can this be done better and governed better and so that all benefit. Because there's very small communities, we think of Tracy and Frederick Junction, that are extremely small, less than a thousand people. And of course, we have our big municipality to the east that has near seventy thousand, so. There's a lot of, a lot of differences in municipalities. And anyway, I I commend the Service Commission, I look forward to what they can try to do in the future. And hopefully, it's an enhancement to some degree for all of the municipalities, large and small. I also attended a R A D com meeting with Bruce Grant and his associates with the two fire chiefs, and then Deputy Mayor Forbes. And we had a chat last Wednesday morning. And I say then Deputy Mayor, because this meeting was scheduled with our former Deputy Mayor to go to that meeting on that day, Wednesday, so. Which was a week after the Deputy Mayor changed positions, so. Anyway, I think the meeting was positive. See what the outcome is of it. The main concern was that we're still on the top channel with our neighbors to the west, northwest. It's not the best of times to be on that, so. There's some movement, I don't know what it'll be, whether it's one channel, two stations, but anyway, it's, hopefully, there'll be improvements, so. That's my report. I move my report, and I have a second.
A second?
Second by Deputy Mayor Brownlow. Any questions in my report?
Did Bruce give any kind of indication as to when that will be settled?
No.
If sometime in the future.
Well, I don't, I mean, Counselor Forbes, maybe you can jump in too, but he didn't give us a timeframe, but he said it needs looked after. I addressed the concern of public of safety, in that he didn't like safety being an issue, and so it's. I think it'll be sooner than later, is all I can say, but I don't have a timeframe.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of players with that, as a lot of us know, there's nine one one, which is Fredericton, and then there's R A D com. And they all play to the parts in this, so there's a lot of collaborating that needs to happen with them, no matter what the decision forward is, so there's, it's a, it's a complex, complex situation.
They they do know those concerns, and I think they're willing to do something, we'll just have to see what they do at the end of the days. Any other questions? Yes.
Would you like to explain more about that for the rest of the council who are not firefighters? What R A D com answers that?
R A D com is the communication that is owned by D T I, the provincial government. And they have multiple channels that fire departments work off in all jurisdictions. And I'll ask Counselor Forbes if he can.
Yeah, I can give you a quick overview of it, so. Radio Communications is the department, like like Mayor said, under Transportation, that looks under after the distribution and sale of radio equipment. Maintenance of infrastructure and a lot of licensing that revolves around it. I believe that encompasses most of what their mandate is, among many other things. Dispatch services, we currently are with the Fredericton Dispatch Services, which look after the nine one one, and they're, they have a very complex system for what they call CAD, which is a computer aided dispatch system, which basically outlines geographic areas where phone calls are picked up and stuff. So they work very closely together with the radio communications equipment and the software. It's really easy to say hardware and software, and we we get one from one, one from the other, and they work very cleverly along with the rest of the problems to determine level of service throughout the entire problem. So we're just one municipality that gets into this program just like everyone else, so. Yeah, that's a basic overview.
Good. Counselor Edwards, can I answer your question?
Well, I knew that, but I'm just for the rest of the council.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of my report?
Aye.
Contrary minded, if any, motion carried. So move on, we'll move on to new business. A motion to approve the first reading by title of bylaw A eleven, a bylaw respecting dog control in Central York rural community. So do I have a motion?
So.
Moved by Counselor Anis, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Drake. So we'll move, we'll read the motion by title, and I'll ask our C A O if he would read that by title.
Bylaw A eleven, a bylaw respecting dog control in Central York rural community.
Thank you. Any questions on this? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, if any, motion carried.
Mister Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I have a motion I'd like to table that has to do with the next two items under new business.
You can't table a motion until there is a motion. Read the Roberts laws.
I can't table a motion.
Until there is a motion. You need to, you need to have a motion to table it.
Look ahead, but I'd like to make a motion, they can make a motion.
Well, can you hang on till we get there?
What's that?
Can you hang on till we get there?
Well, it has to do with the next two items.
Yes, I understand. So, motion to approve first reading by title of bylaw A dash four dot one, a bylaw respecting the remuneration of council for Central York rural community. So do I have a motion for this?
I'll move it.
Moved by Counselor Anis?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drake. Now, you do your.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend it, I guess.
Amend it or table?
Well, I'd like to table a motion that has to do with this.
So what, once it's tabled, discussion is done. Finished, until the motion is brought back.
Okay.
So tell me what you want done.
Okay, to make an amendment.
I would like to make an amendment, then. No, I don't want to make an amendment. Table a motion that has to do with the next two, so my motion basically is, I'll just go ahead and say it. I'd like to motion that we move item B and C, that's under new business in this agenda, toward the next regular council meeting, which is scheduled for February the eleventh.
So that's the table, you're tabling it till the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no further discussion, once it's tabled, it's, it's finished until the next council meeting, okay? So the second motion, the second reading, we can't do the second reading, because the first one was tabled, okay? Any other new business? Oh, sorry, we need a, all those in favor of the table vote, any further question on it?
Be a second. Be a second, please.
We need a, you moved it, so we need a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Downey. Any question on the table motion, yes?
I thought you said there's no more discussion.
There isn't.
Okay, I'd like to know what the motion is.
It's right here on the first page.
Oh, yeah, but I'd like to know, like, the one before, the motion is here. At the, in the, on page whatever. It's here what the motion was on dog control.
That's because.
But there's no motion here.
That's because it was the third reading on dog control.
But all I'm asking for is what is the bylaw A, A four one?
A four one is a bylaw respecting the remuneration of council for Central York, that's, that's council's A.
That's all we hear above.
That's, that's the motion to amend the bylaw.
But I don't know the bylaw.
Yeah, so I put a motion on the, on the floor that needs a second, or my motion is that I would like to move this toward the next regular council meeting. That topic.
Yes, the bylaw is the very last page of your package.
I saw the dog one. Oh, good, okay, thank you. I missed that.
So, we need a second of a tabling of motion, if there's no other questions, are there any other questions?
Second.
Second by Counselor Downey. If no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, if any? Maybe we should have, we should go around the table, then.
Nay.
Nay, Counselor Anis? And will ask these to be recorded?
Yeah, we're recording.
Okay, Counselor Anis?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye, for Counselor Forbes. Counselor Edwards?
Nay. Why not?
Counselor Briller?
Aye.
Counselor?
Aye.
So I vote nay, and that makes it four four, is it not? And that's a no vote.
It is a no vote.
So that means the motion is not tabled. Am I reading this right, we gotta get this straightened?
I do believe the motion has been defeated.
Yes.
Okay, correct, so the original motion is, will stand.
Yes. So now we have to go back to the original motion. We had, we had the first, the first reading, and the motion that that was passed. Right?
The reading.
The, the reading.
Type.
The first and second reading of it.
So now we move on to the second reading.
No, we never did the first reading. I interjected before that.
So the motion that was.
Yes, because it's tabled.
Now we have a vote for discussion.
I thought I had this all down in my. Okay, would you like to read this by title? The, the motion?
Motion to approve first reading by title, bylaw A dash four point one, a bylaw respecting the remuneration of council for Central York rural community.
Thank you. Any question on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have the same vote, I vote, I vote for the motion. So we're back to a tie, which is a no vote. So would you like, sorry, a motion for the second reading in its entirety for bylaw A dash four dot one? So we would ask our, sorry, do we have a second?
I, I don't believe you can go with that one, because the first one's been defeated.
Okay, we clearly have to get on this.
I mean, well, did it pass?
No, it was tied four four.
Right, so it's a no.
So it's a nay. Okay, I'm a little confused.
How many ayes?
You, you voted.
So this motion, nay.
Nay. Sorry.
You need to go around the table.
Okay, for the motion, Counselor Drake?
Aye.
Counselor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, I'm, I'm, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. Nay.
So it's a, it's a tie vote. So that still defeats the vote. So that is, we're done.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Oh, no.
It's, I find this.
Best of your rights.
Quite confusing, so we don't do one or second, thank you for that, keeping it straight. Any other new business?
You had a great beating, remember?
Pardon me? Oh, sorry. I'll move the motion to approve Central York Rural Communities twenty twenty five membership with the Union of Municipalities of Brunswick. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Forbes, any question on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded, if any, motion carried. Any, any other new business?
So would this be the appropriate time to discuss the proposed bylaw that was just defeated, no?
Well. I probably would have that in the first motion after there were any questions. So we come to the question, that's when we start asking questions. I mean.
Would that be a close session?
So we have the Counselor.
Yeah, and I, okay, maybe, because I really don't know, but if I was to make a motion that we discuss this topic at either the next committee of the whole or the committee of the whole following that, should there be time? If there's no delegates for us to discuss this topic as groups, so maybe we can come back to the table.
You, you don't even have to make a motion.
Okay.
We can just, if you want to talk about it, I can see the possibility, so. Hold up to.
I'm confused, though.
No, I mean, if you're trying to talk about it in a future meeting, we can suggest that, but if you want to talk about it right now.
No, and that's what I mean, can we talk about?
You're under your business, so every Counselor has a chance to add something to the film that you need, so. You're under your business, so every councillor has a chance to add something, so it's your choice if you wanna talk about it.
Yes.
Just a point, where would this not follow in their closed session discussion?
Would, would this fall under closed session?
Where it's human resources or, or financials?
You, you already passed the budget, so all these figures were in your budget. This is more of a, a, just chatting about percentages, I think, or whatever your kind of theory. Very good.
What do you have, what were your thoughts?
Okay, so, um, basically, I think we need to have an open discussion on the topic. I don't think as a group we've elaborately actually discussed in full, um, what exactly it was that council may have wanted to do, what council may, um, maybe wanna see worded in the bylaw. I know personally, after reviewing a few other bylaws, uh, in the province for municipalities and seeing their wording, they actually do mention CPI right in their bylaw. And I think it would be, um, beneficial to us to review, uh, maybe some other bylaws to see what other municipalities do. CPI is definitely, um, a factor that many municipalities use, uh, and some municipalities actually cap it as well. So three percent, I think a three percent cap on our annual increase would be wise. I don't know, just open up the floor to anyone else, so if you wanna add anything, that's basically why I did not wanna go through with the motion tonight, is I actually wanted to discuss it, um, before the bylaw was presented, in case we had changes that we wanted to make to that bylaw.
As I said in the email today, if, if our remuneration is changed by one dollar, the bylaw has to change. Cause it's, it has to be stated what council receives in that bylaw. You can't just write in CPI and leave it to grow or whatever. It's gotta, it's gotta have that figure written in of what the remuneration is for that period of time. And it could be for a hundred years unless council so desires to amend the bylaw again in the future. That's, that's the way the governance is written on it. I guess when we first talked about this, we were at a, a fair disadvantage, and I said all this in the email today too, from what the north and the east are compared to the same size populations and tax bases, we're, we're fifty to a hundred percent less. I don't know about all councils here, but I know some councils, uh, they're working for less now than they did two years ago because of the price of fuel and vehicle expense and whatnot. And I, I had run by our CAO, and I had, I had mentioned some of this to deputy for, mayor Forbes at the time, the former deputy mayor, that we were certainly undervalued compared to the north and the east of the province. And then I, I had run by the former deputy mayor that over a six-year plan to try to get us up within at least fifty, sixty percent of what other municipalities of our size are getting. And no, this area here is, it's all undervalued around this service mission area, uh, region twelve compared to the other regions. So that's what I, that's what I run by our CAO, and he said, I, I can't justify that enough. I can't, I can't put that in the budget, so. At the end of the day, he said, put in ten percent, we can justify that, which has been some heavy inflationary years from the time we started. And we're moving into, to another one that's, it's, yes, we've got two years behind us, but we're moving into the third year also. And this may last for, I don't know, two or three or four, five, six years, I have no idea. The next council or this council again could change it, but that's, that's not the issue. It's, the issue, the reason I brought it up is I know there's councillors here that are struggling to pay, uh, bills to get here. And I was only trying to protect them. And I, as I said in the email also, it's a point, um, one of a penny on the tax rate. And we dropped the tax rate thirteen times that compared to what this increase is, and we're still moving ahead with many other projects and goals in mind for the community. So that was, whether it was done, what you wanted to see or whatnot, but there's many budgetary items in there. And yes, we passed it. In some, we had to make a bylaw, we passed the dog control on the budget, and then we had to go and redo the bylaw after the budget was passed to the price we were paying on the dog control. So yes, we knew this had to be amended, but I thought it was in the interest of most council. And maybe I'm naive in thinking that, and if I'm thinking that not correctly, I apologize. But that was my discussion as representative council with our CAO. And my short discussion with former deputy mayor Forbes. So that's my take, councillor Anis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the bylaw itself, um, the, the numbers that were included in there were not bothersome to me. I was just projecting more to the future and subsequent councils, uh, that have bylaws where CPI is mentioned. And from what I can see from those councils, there doesn't seem to be an annual trace of changing the bylaw to meet the new, uh, remuneration based on CPI. It seems to be more of a notation on a budget sheet that that adjustment has been made. And I think it could avoid some awkwardness for future, future councils if, if they don't have to go through and specifically name the figures and, and make it look like councillors are always going for more. That was really my thoughts behind it, and, and that would be the only variance to the bylaw that, that I would wanna see.
Right, and if we write CPI in, the council will sue this every year, even if there's a dollar change. It, it has to, it's the way it's governed. And if you don't write CPI in, we could probably track CPI. We all know what the CPI is, you know, over a period of one or two or three or four years. It's, it's printed, and we should be able to track that and say, we're falling behind. We need to amend the bylaw to come to this range rather than going through it each year, in my opinion. But that, that was the goal I had in mind, and like I said, if I, if I was naive in that, I apologize, but that was, yes.
Now, in discussions we had, I, I wasn't in disagreement with the, with the adjustment of the rate at, at all. The, the way that we landed on the figure and stuff, I, I'm with Wayne on that one, councillor Anis, with, uh, on how to set it up for the future, so it's not, uh, something that has to be revisited every year. And, and if we're under the understanding that it would have to be revisited every year to adjust the bylaw, then have, potentially, that's just a reading and, uh, an adjustment at a time, big stuff with the CPI of that year. It's, it'd be something built into future years every year, council in January would have to do that after the budget is, construct the budget can be based off of CPI knowing that in advance. And, and that's kinda why I wanted to see us discuss this a little bit more on how we can, where that, even if it is cumbersome, it's an extra step that council would have to do long after we're gone potentially. I would want that to be something that they would have to change back on their own if they chose, so chose to. I, I like the idea of tying it to something, so we can, we can tie it to something that's global, that's not a, that's not a figure that's pulled out of an estimator adjustment. I understand this adjustment's actually quite conservative, that it can base off of the last number of years' increase in CPI, if we were gonna go retroactive. Yeah, that, that was my only concern, is to, is to set us up to not have, have this conversation every year if we had a major inflation year or a major year we didn't have inflation that, uh, that this figures through.
But you, you would sooner have us get through this each year and change and amend the bylaw to fit what it increases to CPI on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other, otherwise I feel that it would drag on, well, we, this council would have to go through, uh, an election in May of twenty twenty six, so we would only have one more shot at this anyway, if we were to choose to change it in an election year before that, um, which could be unpopular by some councillors, they wouldn't wanna touch the issue within that first half of the year and see how elections go. So I can see that as being something that the next council would wanna touch, and then it, it affects people going forward, that it becomes the hot topic that no one wants to discuss. And I'm more than happy to discuss, it's never been a fear to find to discuss, uh, proper remuneration, but I, I wanna make sure that whatever we do today could potentially carry, carry through to, to future discussions. So if council is required in next January to visit CPI, and the bylaw already will have happened based off of percentage of CPI that year, I feel that's less awkward than trying to back calculate a couple of years every few years. But that was my take.
Yes, councillor Anis?
Just a further comment to my comments earlier and, and councillor Forbes. I think by mentioning CPI in a bylaw such as this serves as a safeguard to against council ever designing a hefty change in remuneration, if that be the will of that council in the future. So it's a safeguard for councillors, or councils coming up, safeguard for the fiscal responsibility that we've committed to for our citizens.
Now, they would have to, uh, they could, if they wanted to, council could determine to double the remuneration as soon as they ran, and council could do that without anything, it would be set in place, be set in stone. But it does force the conversation, and they would have to decide or justify why.
Doesn't this mean that you are actually saying that its salary should be raised every year? Why should, why should we be saying that it should be raised? Maybe it shouldn't be raised this year?
Well, that's a discussion over, huh?
I know, but I see the other way going.
Anything, anything further?
Me?
Yeah. Councillor Downey?
I don't see it as a way to raise remuneration yearly. I see it as a function to address it and discuss it. And just because you've put into the bylaw that you would tie it to CPI, it does not mean that you would have to vote to increase that each year. You could say, no, given the circumstances, let's keep it as is this year. I, I, cause every year is different, this year is especially different. There's a lot of different things happening right now, a lot of price pressures upon people. And I would not want to add to their price pressures.
But on the other hand, I also was thinking of council, cause I know there's, I know there's councillors struggling to pay, pay their gas and their car payments and their bills and their way or tear to get here. I, I'm try, I'm trying, my thought was trying to protect the taxpayers and protect council here also, but I, you know, we're open to whatever council wants, well, that's the way it works anyway, so.
Does there have to be a bylaw?
Yes, there has to be a bylaw.
So there's no point at which we can say for this year, no?
No.
We don't wanna pay those raises?
Of course.
So when does that happen?
It happens because we already have.
No, when, when?
You know, we have a bylaw, and if the bylaw is not changed, nothing changes.
The salary stays the same?
Yes.
So we have to vote down the bylaw to be able to keep the salary at what it is?
You have to vote in three readings of a new bylaw and repel the old. Questions over here?
Not necessarily a question, but I would like to see it tied to CPI and addressed, and, and not necessarily retroactive. We chose not to change it last year. I don't think this is the moment to go back and change it based on the last two years. I, I, if we change it, I'd like to see it based on current year's CPI. So not, not tied to the same.
But ten percent is cumulative?
I know. I know that that is the cumulative that it's been, but we also chose not to do this last year. I was comfortable with what we had last year. I think from this moment forward, I, I would only be comfortable with something tied to this year's CPI. Not more.
We chose, we just didn't do anything.
That's a choice too, right?
I don't remember any discussion, it's just, we didn't do anything.
But in action is also a choice.
Sometimes.
I just think that CPI just clouds any issue, that's all.
Any further discussion over here?
So, question, CPI. Everybody throws it around, where do we get this number, Canadian government?
There's all kinds of different CPIs, there's Canadian, there's, there's.
Kind of look at the, the government ones.
Provincial?
They have several different ones on their website, some are minus power, some are minus the food component. So they have like four different ones to choose from, which one do we go with if we're gonna tie it to CPI? Another discussion.
That's, that's the danger of tying it to CPI.
Or you go with inflation.
Other than guarding it, council guarding it themselves is. We're this many dollars behind in two or three or four years, we need to move it up a little bit. Can you tie it here? What's the right figure? I've seen all kinds of things shot around the service mission lately. The, the mileage, they took the Canadian, uh, mileage figure rather than provincial, which is probably twenty cents higher. And I, I, I wondered why they took the Canadian, but anyway, that's somebody decided, so, yes.
For the CPI that I was looking at, I used StatsCam and went by New Brunswick. And December twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, from what I could read of it, was two point five percent.
Is that minus the power component?
Everything added in.
Plus the Canadian government was four point five with the power.
So, that's under new business, is it just a discussion? Or is there something we wanna act on, motion, what do you want to do? Just leave it as discussion?
So I don't think we should do it as inaction, so what I would suggest, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but, um, we can continue through email chatter on what we would like to propose for a bylaw and bring it to, uh, committee?
I don't know if I wanna entertain email chatter like we've had today, I don't have the time for that, so. If there's something needs said, it should be said. Yes.
I would almost suggest that we go with the bylaw changed and add the CPI to it for the remaining years.
Do you wanna make that a motion?
Uh, I can motion that we go with the bylaw that was presented with the amendment that CPI be added to it for consecutive years. Moving forward.
Do we have a second? Second there.
Oh, second?
Second by councillor Anis. Any questions on this? So I, I just, for clarification, we're gonna take what the bylaw is proposed and write CPI in it for future years.
That would be how I would do it, cause that would give us a little bump to bring us more in line with the rest of the rural communities around Brunswick, and that puts out a safeguard for council to discuss each year.
Yes.
So I do have a question, when you're looking at that bylaw, are you looking at our current figures or the adjusted figures and then CPI?
The current figures that are right now, and then to be adjusted CPI.
In the future.
In the future.
Okay.
Did you have a question, councillor Forbes?
Yeah, just clarification around, around that. So are you talking the current bylaw A four that has been enacted since twenty twenty two?
No, the current.
Twenty twenty three.
The amended.
The amended bylaw and then revisit next year to look at CPI at that time?
So the, the current bylaw as amended presented, plus that would have the added on CPI caveat.
For future, for next year, like, like a built-in way of having to revisit this January twenty six?
Correct.
But not, not adjusted from this number in here as of today?
No, the number stays as is for the current fiscal year, and from then on, CPI.
Next year, would you require them to revisit?
Correct.
Questions, concerns, comments, yes?
Yep, so I would like to amend that motion to.
We need a second or first?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I would like to propose an amendment to the motion, uh, that we keep bylaw, uh, number A dash four as it, or, A dash four that's in place, so our current bylaw, and adjust CPI for. and adjust CPI for the past four months.
So the mover has to be willing to accept the amendment?
I do not accept that for this current year.
You had a question, Counselor Edwards?
Like, at that point, I was just saying, did that mean that the wage for the mayor, I'm just gonna use you as an example, will remain at twenty thousand?
The motion that's on the floor will be twenty-two thousand.
No. So if I'm disagreeing with that, I would vote it down. My thing is, is it should stay exactly the way it is right now here.
Okay, but the motion on the floor would read twenty-two thousand for mayor and CPI built into the bylaw moving ahead. Is, is everybody clear on the motion? Okay. No further questions? Counselor Drake? Yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Anis?
Yea.
Counselor Forbes?
Yea.
I'm yea.
Nay.
Counselor Brewer?
Nay.
Nay.
Phil? Yes?
Um, you never even had a cap in there. So say the CPI was like ten percent. Like, there should be a cap. I would suggest that council stop comparing themselves to other municipalities, because you don't have ours who are here. There's so many services you don't offer here. Like, you have to look at Central York and what you currently have. And yes, you're picking up the arena, but other communities own all recreation, you know what I mean? Everything they offer is under their wing, under their oversight. So don't look at places to the east or to the north and see, you know, forty thousand dollar salaries, because they have different things. And they've been there for a lot longer, you know what I'm saying? So if you're gonna do this properly, you should have had a good chat, you know, I know you're chatting right now, but table to another meeting that you're, committee of the whole, have a bigger chat, whatever you need to do.
Yes.
But
Well, there's, yeah, there's, right to date, there's nothing to table, right?
No, I'm just saying, like, you know, you can table the conversation, and it doesn't have to be a motion, it can be just a conversation. You know, ready to maybe talk through there, or maybe you, I wouldn't make any, any decisions, kinda.
So Counselor Edwards has a question for you.
Why do you think we're comparing to other municipalities?
Well, I keep hearing that.
Oh, cause that's definitely not why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying you, I'm saying
No, no.
When you look at, you know, look at your, your remuneration, look at what you have oversight on, and how many meetings you hold, and all that stuff, which should be all taken into consideration.
I, I, I equate wage to good service.
So I think this needs discussion down the road. Uh, it's been noted of where I guess we go with what's on the budget. Uh, so we take, we just don't enact that piece of the budget? Drew?
Yes.
So is there any other new business from anyone else? Here, none? If I have a motion, remove it to closed session.
Yes.
Remove like Counselor Drake, second by Counselor Brewer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion period.